Hello, everyone. I'm Kristine Robinson, Mayor of West Gray, and Chair of the Committee of the Whole Planning Meeting. Welcome to the November 10, 2020 meeting. With regard to call to order, I want to let everybody know that we are using audio only to conduct this electronic meeting. Video is not possible at this time due to limited bandwidth in some areas of West Gray. Bandwidth is challenging our ability to do a complete video broadcast. So for now, we'll be sharing today's agenda in addition to the audio. I would like members of committee to identify their attendance at this time. I see Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, Counselor Townsend, Counselor Hergert, Counselor Shea, Counselor Hutchinson. Now, please note that Counselor Hamilton was regrets for Committee of Adjustment. I'm going to suggest that the regrets are extended to Committee of the Whole Planning, but in the event that she does attend, that we will certainly acknowledge her at that time. So we do have members of council sitting as committee present. We do have a quorum. Our agenda has been posted and circulated. This meeting is being recorded, and the meeting will be posted on our website, westgray, www.westgray.com. Okay, so at this point, we are looking at item number two, which is disclosure pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Members of committee, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Counselor Hutchinson. I just note your thumbs up, Counselor Hutchinson. Do you have anything to say with regard to item number two?
No, sorry.
That's fine. Thank you.
Forgot to put it down, that's all.
Absolutely no problem. Okay, so I'm moving on to item number three, Presentations Delegations. 3.1, Proposal to Create a Residential Subdivision, Georgian Planning Solutions and Co-Bide Engineering. Now, we do have Kristin Rennie, a planner from Georgian Planning Solutions, available to do the presentation prior to that beginning. I would ask the clerk to read the recommendation. I would be looking for a mover and seconder. We will hear the presentation from Planner Rennie. There will be questions, and then I will call the vote, just to give by way of format. Thank you. Clerk Charbeck, could you please read the recommendation at hand?
Thank you through your chair. The recommendation is that Committee of the Whole Planning receive the presentation, Proposal to Create a Residential Subdivision by Georgian Planning Solutions and Co-Bide Engineering.
Thank you. Counselor Townsend, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Townsend, yes, I'm moving the motion.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
This is Deputy Mayor Hutchinson. I will second the motion.
Thank you. So now, at this time, I'd like to welcome Kristin Rennie, planner from Georgian Planning Solutions. Welcome, and we are looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of committee. My name's Kristin Rennie. I'm a registered professional planner with Georgian Planning Solutions. And I do have Travis Burnside with me tonight, or today. It's still the afternoon. It's light out from co-bide engineering, in case there are any questions specifically related to engineering. If someone could just, I'll just indicate, switch slide. Does that work?
Yes, that'll be just fine, and thank you. Welcome to Travis as well.
Thank you.
Great. So just to start off with, I wanted to, I kind of got these two slides mixed up, but I'll go this way. So in the county official plan, the subject lands that we're talking about today are designated primary settlement area. And in the West Gray official plan, the subject lands are located in Durham, which is a primary settlement area within the municipality of West Gray and is designated residential. If you could switch the slide, please. The property is located in Durham, and it's located north of Durham Road East between Highway 6 and Concession 2 in West Gray, obviously. Legally described as concession one, part of Lot 24. And the lot area of the property is approximately 13.8 hectares. If you could go to the next slide, actually, two slides, please, to the draft plan subdivision. Thank you. So the proposal that I'm talking about this evening is to create a residential subdivision through a draft plan of subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment to enable a residential development capable of accommodating between 169 to 208 residential units that will consist of single-detached residential units with frontages ranging from 12.4 meters to 23.9 meters, as well as including five townhouse blocks, which could range in unit type. But the developer now is looking at developing a bungalow-type townhouse with a double-car garage, so it would probably be closer to the 51 units if that was the footprint for that, for the townhouses. Stormwater management will be contained on site and will be directed to the southwest of the site into a stormwater management pond. So if you're looking at the draft plan of subdivision plan, just look at the bottom left of the plan on the screen. The development will be utilizing full municipal services that already exist in the area and provide sufficient capacity. Access to the site will be off of Durham Road East at two locations, which you can notice at the bottom of the draft plan on that figure that you're looking at, as well as an extension of Jackson Street from the north subdivision, the Sunvale subdivision. As well, we have included at the top of Street A, which would be at the top of the draft plan, a future possible extension to lands to the north if the settlement area is ever expanded. What else was I going to say? Oh, so we've also included, if you look at the draft plan, at the top-left side of the plan, there's a block that sort of runs in behind some single-detached lots that are adjacent along the property line of the adjacent property. That is a trade area that we are maintaining and will have as part of a parkland area with a trail that runs through it for the residents that live in the neighborhood. There's also sidewalks proposed within the development as well to create active transportation. And we are also looking at trails around the stormwater management pond just to create a little bit of more parkland area in the subdivision. The next slide, please. So we submitted this application in April, and as part of our submission, we included some supporting documents, including a planning justification report, an archaeological report, functional servicing report, stormwater management report, traffic impact study, and an environmental impact study. So the applications have been deemed complete, and we have a statutory public meeting, which is scheduled for December 1, which is in a couple of weeks. And we just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce the site and the proposal to you this afternoon. And at this point, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Planner Rennie. We really appreciate it. Just asking Travis Burnside, sorry, Travis Burnside, is there anything you wish to add at this time?
Not at this time. Kristin and I kind of went through it. As she said, it'll be on full municipal services.
Great. Well, thank you for that, and very much appreciate that you came forward to council sitting as committee of the whole planning to provide us with an update on the proposal to create this residential subdivision. Thank you. With that, questions, members of committee? Do you have any questions of the presenter? If so, please raise your hand. Well, I'm not seeing any at this time. And certainly, as I said it, there is somebody. Counselor Hergert, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm curious about street names and when we would discuss the names of potential streets. Any possibility of deeply affordable housing in this proposed subdivision?
Kristin Rennie.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. In terms of the street names, we have not gone through that formal process yet. Typically, that is done after we've done the public meeting and sort of moved through the detailed design, or not detailed design, but the review of the submission. And I'm not off the top of my head, I'm not aware of a street naming bylaw in West Gray. So I definitely will follow up with Laura Lee on that and get that process moving forward. In terms of affordable housing, we have, within the development, we have a request for smaller single-detached lots, which would create a smaller house, which would obviously be at a lower price point, as well as the townhouses within the development, which would be a lower price point than a larger single-detached dwelling. And so that was the approach of the developer in terms of trying to diversify the types of units that would be offered within the subdivision.
Thank you very much for that. Any idea when building would commence?
Well, that's a good question as well. So we are just at the beginning of going through the approval process. I would anticipate that if we could get things moving along, that the opportunity to maybe in the fall to start something. I don't know if Travis has a better timeline associated with all the work that he needs to do once we get through the approvals because of the detailed designs. But Travis, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would say the fall is a realistic target, assuming we get through the draft. The next step would be to finish up the detailed design and get municipal staff, or municipal staff buy-in on that.
Audio, I wonder if you could just repeat that, please?
Yeah, so, sorry. If we can get through the draft plan approval process quickly, then we will move into getting municipal approval of the servicing design and ministry of environment approval as well. All is a realistic target.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Hergert?
Not at this time. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Townsend, please.
Yes, it's Counselor Townsend. Thank you very much. My questions actually have been answered, but I would like to thank you for coming to council, and thank you for coming to Durham and West Gray. I think it's very important that we continue to expand and meet the needs of those that live here and those that are coming here. So again, thank you very much.
Counselor Hutchinson, please.
Yeah, Counselor Hutchinson here. I see in your supporting documents that you did a traffic impact study, and I know I read this when it first came through, but I forgot what that was. But I know when Can Do Homes or Sunvale put theirs in, they did a traffic study, and there was no warrant for extra lighting or anything much to do with that. Do you foresee, what was the result of your traffic impact study?
So the same company that did the traffic impact study for the Sunvale Homes one, expanded it with this one. Looking, you know, 10 years after buildout with the increase in background traffic, there may be a requirement kind of way further out there, a lot to do with just increased background traffic on Highway 6, and their recommendation was to review it, you know, following full buildout of both subdivisions. And if the background traffic has increased as projected, they're just kind of guessing, you know, 20 years out, what's going to happen with Highway 6. So their recommendation was to review it at that time.
Okay. Yeah, I think probably, you know, eventually down the road, we're going to probably have to look at some lights, stoplights on Highway 6, but that's in the future. Have you done, in your studies, is there anything mentioned about the Durham Road East, the road, and any upgrades on that?
I guess as part of, there was a, like, Public Works has put out an RFP that Durham Road is going to be upgraded in phases. And as part of the Sunvale site as well, there is a section of sanitary sewer that has to be upgraded there that is planned in the coming years.
Right, but there's, I know we're looking at sidewalks of this area. Was there any mention of sidewalks, and are you doing sidewalks in the new subdivision?
There will be sidewalks in the new subdivision that will tie into the sidewalks on Durham Road when it's upgraded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shea, please.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson asked several of my questions. But my question, my last question is to the planner, Spencer. Can you tell us what the next steps in our involvement as council are in overseeing and approving a project like this? Like, are there opportunities for us to discuss things like further development of Durham Road East, tree planting? I don't know any, I'm just kind of curious about what the steps are and where we should be planning to be engaged.
Yes. Planner Spencer, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, certainly through the public meeting process, there will be information provided that not only outlines the process in terms of work that's been done to date, the peer review of the documents that has been done to date, and any changes that have been utilized to accommodate those concerns or issues or requests for further information from the applicant. Certainly looking at a landscape plan that's more further down the line in terms of what happens after we get through detailed design and after they're dealing with fulfillment of draft plan conditions. So that is still a little ways out, but certainly we should be engaged at the public meeting stage to answer any questions from the public or provide any information and insight that council would like to provide to the applicants and their agents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the committee? Seeing none. Clerk Charbeck, could you please read the motion?
Through your chair, the motion, the recommendation is that Committee of the Whole Planning receive presentation, Proposal to Create a Residential Subdivision by Georgian Planning Solutions and Co-Bide Engineering.
And it was moved by Counselor Townsend, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hutchinson. All those in favor indicate with a check mark. Those opposed indicate with a next mark. Mayor Kristine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Townsend, please.
Counselor Townsend, in favor.
Counselor Hergert.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Shea.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion carried. I would just like to thank Kristin Rennie and Travis Burnside for your presentation. We very much appreciate that you came forward at this stage of the proposal to provide our council sitting as committee with an update on the proposed residential subdivision here in Durham. So thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you again at our committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. Item number four, Public Meeting Pursuant to the Planning Act, Section 34. Clerk Charbeck, there's two things I'm asking of you at this point. Could you please read the purpose of this public meeting? And then, following that, would you please read the recommendation?
Thank you through your chair. The purpose of this public meeting is to allow the presentation of an application to proceed for a proposed amendment to bylaw 37-2006, being the zoning bylaw of the municipality of West Gray, and to allow interested members of the public the opportunity to ask questions or offer comments with regard to the application. The committee will not make a decision on the application at this public meeting. Based on the recommendations and information received at this public meeting, an amending bylaw may be presented for approval at a regular council meeting. There is a public registry located online with Recreation Supervisor Hewlett. And if any member of the public would like to be notified in writing of the decision on the application, they are to provide their name and mailing address to Mr. Hewlett via email or telephone for the registry. A person or public body may appeal the decision if they've made an oral submission at this public meeting or a written submission to council prior to the passing of the bylaw. The recommendation is that Committee of the Whole Planning hereby convenes in a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act, Section 34.
Thank you. Is there a mover for this motion? Counselor Hergert, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Is there a seconder for this motion? Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Hutchinson seconds the motion, yes.
Question on the motion. All those in favor signify with a check mark. Those opposed with a next mark. As I call your name, please state your name and how you are voting. Mayor Kristine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shea.
Counselor Shea, in favor.
Counselor Hergert.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Townsend.
Counselor Townsend, in favor.
Motion carried. So now we're moving over to item 4.1, Application Number ZA 10.2020-1993934, Ontario Inc., in brackets, Tremble. Item 4.1.1, Planner Spencer Report. Prior to hearing the report, Clerk Charbeck, could you please read the recommendation?
Through your chair, the recommendation is that the committee receive the report regarding application number ZA 10-2020 for 1993934, Ontario Inc., and recommend to council to consider an amending bylaw to fulfill a condition of provisional consent, B03-2020.
I'd be looking for a mover and a seconder. We will then have the presentation from Planner Spencer. Questions as we move through the process that is identified in 4.1.1 through to 4.1.3. So we'll have the presentation, and then questions from committee members, questions or comments from the public, and then the vote will be called. Okay, so with that, could I ask if there's a mover for this motion? Counselor Townsend, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Townsend, yes, I am moving the motion.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, I will second the motion.
All right, thank you. Planner Spencer, your report, please.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. This application pertains to a condition of provisional consent to recognize the deficient lot frontage and area of the subject lands. No comments of concern were received from the County of Gray Planning Department, in addition to the Sogeen Valley Conservation Authority, both of whom commented on the application previously. In the professional opinion of the planner, this application meets the condition of consent in addition to maintaining the density requirements of the rural area and also maintaining the appropriate frontage and area required to accommodate development of the additional lots. Planning staff have no further concerns at this time, and no comments were received from the public in opposition or in support of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Spencer. At this point, we are on 4.1.3, verbal comments. 4.1.3.1, committee members. Members of committee, questions or comments? Supervisor Hewlett, just as a double check on my dashboard, is there anybody from our committee that wishes to speak?
At this time, Mayor Robinson, I am not seeing any members wishing to speak.
Okay, that's just a double check on 4.1.3.1 for committee members. I'm now going to move on to members of the public. That is under 4.1.3.2. Supervisor Hewlett, could you please assist in terms of how a member of the public can speak to this item at hand? And I would first be looking for, after you speak with regard to the information, if the agent or applicant would like to speak first, and then we will go through the public that wishes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Members of the public wishing to speak towards this may do so in a variety of ways. The first would be by raising their hand. You can raise your hand by pressing the Raise Your Hand function located usually in the bottom-right-hand corner of your screen if you have joined us using the online meeting software. The second way to raise your hand, if you have joined us over the phone, would be to do so by pressing star nine. When you raise your hand, we will call upon you to read your name into the record and state your comment. Alternatively, you can also send a chat message to myself, Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor.
Thank you, Supervisor Hewlett. So first off, would the agent or applicant wish to speak? Thank you. Kevin Tremble, welcome, and you have the mic.
Hi, Kevin Tremble speaking here. No real comments. I agree with everything in Planner Spencer's report. And I'd just like to thank Planner Spencer for getting us on the agenda here. I was a little late getting on the information to her, but she made it happen. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Hewlett, I'm asking if there's any members of the public, whether they wish to speak in favor or in opposition, or just a comment. If there's anyone that's either submitted a written comment or has joined us either by phone or through the internet, is there anyone that wishes to speak?
At this time, Mayor Robinson, I am not seeing any members wishing to speak either on the dashboard or through chat messages to myself.
Thank you for that. So Clerk Charbeck, could you then read the motion at hand, which was moved by Counselor Townsend, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Through your chair, yes, the recommendation is that Committee of the Whole Planning receives a report from Planner Spencer regarding application ZA 10-2020 for 1993934, Ontario Inc., and that the committee recommends to council that an amending bylaw be considered to fulfill a condition of provisional consent, B03-2020.
Thank you. Questions or comments with regard to the motion at hand? Seeing none? All those in favor indicate with a check mark. Those opposed indicate with a next mark. One moment, I'm just going to move my dashboard up. Thank you. Mayor Kristine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Townsend.
Counselor Townsend, in favor.
Counselor Hergert.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Counselor Shea.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Yes, I'm here. I didn't hear my name, but Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Hutchinson.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
The motion does carry. We are now moving on to item 4.1.4, Closed Public Meeting. Clerk Charbeck, could you read the recommendation?
Through your chair, the recommendation is that Committee of the Whole Planning hereby closes this public meeting at 3:09 PM.
First of all, if members could... Is, oh, first of all, if members could clear their dashboard, and then if there is a mover for this motion, Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you moving this motion?
This is Deputy Mayor Hutchinson. I will move the motion.
Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Hutchinson, seconds the motion.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor indicate with a check mark. Those opposed with a next mark. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson?
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shea?
Counselor Shea, yes.
Counselor Herger?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Townsend?
Counselor Townsend, in favor.
The motion does carry. Item five, next meeting date. Clerk Charback, could you please identify if a next meeting date has been settled?
Through your chair, there is no next meeting date determined at this time.
Thank you for that. On item number six, adjournment. Clerk Charback, could you please read the recommendation?
Through your chair, the recommendation is that West Gray Committee of the Whole Planning adjourns at 3:11 PM.
Thank you. Is there a mover for this motion? Counselor Shea, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Shea, I move re-adjourn.
Is there a seconder? Counselor Herger, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Herger, yes, second amendment, second adjournment.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, utilize a check mark. Those opposed, utilize a next mark. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson?
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shea?
Counselor Shea, yes.
Counselor Herger?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Townsend?
Counselor Townsend, in favor.
Motion carried. We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.